We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you could do the roll call, please.
Ettinger?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Yeah.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
Evans?
Here. If we could rise for the invocation, we have Pastor Mike Slothauer of the River of Life Friends.
City Council members, Mayor, thank you for an opportunity to come in prayer. Please join me in prayer. Father, we love you. We thank you for the beautiful place that we get to live. We thank you that winter is gone. We thank you today, Father, that we got to be a part of the election process as we've voted for those who would represent us, those who would be public servants before us. We thank you today, Lord, that we dedicated a memorial to Greg Moore as a public servant who ultimately paid the ultimate price. We pray, Father, as our community heals, that we would remember that freedom isn't free and that you have a plan for our lives. I pray that you would give direction this evening to our city council members and our mayor. And again, I thank you that all wisdom comes from you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Go ahead, lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I think any changes to the agenda have been adequately noticed, so we don't have any amendments to tonight's agenda. So we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 18028.
Motion and second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council would have three minutes to do so pertaining to city business. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council at this time? Come on up, Chet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Chet Gady from Mill River. Good on ya. Good morning this morning, so thanks for buying the beach and the river. Also, good on ya for what's on the agenda tonight about a possible MOU with Mr. Douglas and his property and the railroad property going through there. Good on ya again. Now, you've had two cheers, and I want to say a little word of caution. Back in 2014, when we first started talking about the railroad property and what it was going to lead to, and there was a smart alky remark from council, I don't remember if it was Mr. Gookin or Mr. McEvers, about we should...
I think they'll vote on me, but go ahead.
I don't know. It's a toss-up between the two of you. And it was like, geez, we should just buy the whole Atlas property. So, good on ya. Now, with this MOU you're looking at right now, I just want to caution you to think about a couple of things. When we were talking about the railroad property and changing it for riverfront property, it was really good, we used the term "river-centric." And when we used the term "river-centric," even we're asking for a whole zoning change to make it river-centric, we had no idea what that was. It's just a cool word, and everybody sort of had a feeling what it was. And I want to thank council for putting some meat on that bone through the public process, looking at the Atlas mill site, and the consultant saying, "Well, the street should go this way, and the building should look like this, and this should flow this way." And all of those things are river-centric. So my caution, I guess, is when you enter and when you look at the MOU on the, I don't know what to call it, the river's edge property, don't lose sight of the river-centric possibilities and restrictions that are in the annexation agreement. Sometimes annexations agreements happen a long time ago, and we forget what's in them. Now, you're probably going to think about things like added density for that property. That doesn't mean it can't be river-centric. It doesn't mean the design of the property, when they put in the PUD, which is required in the annexation agreement, which I hope will be required in the MOU, river-centric. All I'm asking you, now we know what it means, let's put it to work. So, again, good on you for your good work today and what you're going to do tonight. Thank you.
Chet? Anyone else in the audience wish to give any public comment tonight?
Mayor, Council, Larry Spencer. I technically live in Post Falls, but I spend most of my days in Coeur d'Alene. I'd like to address something that is kind of timely right now, given that it's an election season. For a number of years, the city has had ordinances regarding the size of political signs that are allowed to be placed. And for probably almost an equal number of years, the city has not enforced that ordinance. So last week, I drove around and identified a number of signs that were by a number of different candidates, some running for Congress, some running for local offices, some running for state office, that were 15 square feet, which is almost twice the eight square feet allowed by the city's ordinance. I contacted the city and was assured that they would be dealt with. They weren't. The problem is that when the city creates an ordinance like this, it disenfranchises the candidates that are meticulous about working to follow the law, and it rewards those who basically thumb their nose at the law. Because when a sign is almost twice the size of other signs, that's the one that gets looked at by people when they're approaching it, and the other signs are just kind of ignored because they're already focused on the large one. Given that the city has for many years not enforced this ordinance, or at least not even-handedly and not aggressively, I would ask that the city either enact some strident penalties, like $100 per sign that they find the person who obtains a sign permit, or better, that the city simply vacate the ordinance that is no longer, or was maybe originally, but isn't any longer being enforced. And I realize that's a huge sign, but there are four-by-eight signs in the city of Coeur d'Alene that were identified and given to the city administration, and nothing happened. This has been almost a week. Lastly, one of the persons that has one of the offending signs, and I won't name names, but has not turned in the pre-primary, seven-day pre-primary sunshine report. And when queried by a person about why he hadn't turned in his pre-primary, he said, paraphrased, "What are they going to do to me if I don't?" And I would ask the city to consider if this is the kind of behavior that they want to allow to continue by their lack of enforcement or by having a sign ordinance that is not well-enforced.
I guess a question that I have, would there have been anyone that had to turn in any sunshine reports to you or not at this election?
No, not during this election. There were no local races, so it would go through the county and the state.
So it wasn't any city issue?
It wasn't the city that had the sunshine report. I simply brought it up because I found it interesting that the person who had not filed and still has not filed a complete seven-day pre-primary sunshine report is one of the approximately four offending candidates that has signs almost twice as large as the ordinance. And whether they don't know, or whether they don't care, or whether the attitude simply becomes, who's going to do anything about it, it's disenfranchising to those candidates who are trying to follow the law and do the right thing.
And I do, this has been an issue, and this might have been as worse as I've seen it, where people were putting signs in public right-of-way, which when you fill out the permit, you should know, I believe or not, it's spelled out, that you can't put signs in public right-of-way, and people just... So we did go through and have a sweep of those signs, and we took the signs that were down in public right-of-way, we took those out. But, yeah, you know, there are some communities that outlaw campaign signs altogether because of all these...
Probably not constitutional.
Violation. Well, there are communities that have done it, but, yeah, it's tough to get people to follow the rules, but we definitely can do a better job next time. My understanding now is that do people have to take all of their signs down before they do this all again, probably starting in September?
Two days. They have two days from today's voting to remove all their political signs.
And then they'll go back up again in the fall?
Yes.
So we'll make note of that and try to do a better job.
One other thing is, for the fall, I would ask that the signs, for instance, that are in the right-of-way or that are exceeding the sign size requirements, be confiscated by the city until the day after the election.
Oh, yeah.
You do something wrong with your sign, we're not giving it back to you tomorrow to put it back up. You can pick it up after the election. That can be changed on the form that they fill out that they agree to that.
Dan, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Larry phoned me several times. Sorry, I was busy, that's why I didn't pick up. But I did talk to our sign goddess here, who's Kelly right there, and I asked her your concerns, and she told me that every time that a complaint is made about a large sign or a sign in the right-of-way, we give it to our code enforcement officer, Mr. Youngman, and he goes around, and as his schedule allows, because he's really busy enforcing a lot of codes in the city, as you can imagine, he'll go and he'll deal with the signs. It was just that this year is a first year of our vacation rental ordinance, and a lot of people are following the code, which is great. So he is going around and inspecting those locations, and then going around and picking up the signs. So it may have been a perfect storm with that, in that regularly, the signs would have been collected, like you say, the signs that are big. Not only that, there's a lot of signs out there that did not even have a permit to put up a sign in the city, so they would have been removed too. We can't actually destroy them because they're not our property, but we can collect them. So I think next year, hopefully, the vacation ordinance is not new, so not as many people will require that initial inspection, and Mr. Youngman or whoever's doing our code enforcement will go around and pick up a lot more of the signs. But it is something that is one of the, you know, there's so many yard signs, as you know, and it's just going to be a lot of work for someone to go around and pick them up. I mean, you'll see them in a week, you know you will. And it helps out if anyone wants to tell the city, give a call, and let us know where a sign is, and we will deal with it as we can.
I appreciate that. The one thing I would reiterate is, if they lost their signs for the duration of the election season, they would probably be much more conscientious about following the rules in the first place, and then there wouldn't be an enforcement problem.
That's supposing that a politician's going to follow the rules in the first place, which opens another can of worms, so there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment at this time? If not, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have announcement tonight? No announcements, so we'll move on to appointments. And I would like to appoint Roberta Larson to the Arts Commission.
So move.
Wait, wait, wait. I don't want you to make that one, I'll make that one. I would like to move to appoint Steve Widmire to the Ignite CDA Board.
Okay. Okay, so we have both of those. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now, we'll move on to Public Works Committee. We have the amendments. We, Council Bill Number 18-1008, Amendments to the Municipal Code, Section 2, 84020, moving the limitation of serving on the Arts Commission for more than two consecutive terms. We, the first of many, many presentations by Troy tonight, so Troy, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I bring before you a proposal to remove the term limits for the only commission or committee in the city of Coeur d'Alene. It was envisioned in 2007 that we would put this in place, and it is, in my opinion, time for it to be sunsetted. It basically states that they can have up to two terms of three years each. And as you can appreciate, in a turnover situation and a number of folks that aren't there for the full two terms, we don't have a lot of longevity. We have a few people that are pressing up against the term limit, and they have the most seasoning, the most knowledge, the most history that we would like to keep in that Arts Commission. I also think that you have a great backstop when working with these volunteers, in that every three years, they still come forward to be reappointed by you, and this commission is working very hard to make sure that it's an active member of the commission, that they are attending regularly, and are going to put into place some procedures that help confirm what an active, great committee commissioner is. So we had a couple of things going on here. The commission has worked on this for a number of months. We have a great new commissioner coming on board, and if they wanted to leave, that is always a viable option. But we would like and propose to you tonight to discuss or move forward with eliminating term limits.
Questions for Troy? Woody?
Troy, I'm trying to think back why that even happened. Was it because they spend money?
It's such a fun commission to be on that they just never wanted to leave, so we thought maybe back in that era that having term limits would continue to bring new folks in was one of the things that we look back in the history on what happened. Our great friend and former council member, Deanna Goodlander, was here when this was put into play, and if she was here tonight, I would suggest to you that she would be comfortable with it going away, as she indicated in this commission meeting, and she represents Ignite on that commission. So, times change would be my answer.
Kiki?
Just one thing, Troy, and we touched on this briefly at the committee level, but in, I think legal confirmed that this commission is slightly different than the others in that they have a percentage of funds, excuse me, dedicated directly to the commission as a volunteer body itself to spend. They don't really go through, like the other commissions who recommend to the Parks Department or whatever department it is, what should happen, but they directly do manage those funds. And we discussed this, I had a little bit of concern about that, when you have no term limits for someone, an entity that is directly spending the money. So I think it's important to note that their procedure will stay in place, that they get community involvement, and the budget still is reviewed by council and approved by line item as to what they spend those on, even though it's directly managed by them. So I feel like that question was answered, and I'm comfortable with the new request because of that.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I read the Arts Commission minutes on this subject, and they were very entertaining, not a good way, that they couldn't really decide exactly what it was they wanted. So there was a motion that was made that didn't get a second. There was another motion that I recall was to limit it to three terms, and I think that one got a second, but it didn't pass. And so this was, I mean, there's a couple of pages there of dialogue. So do I understand this correctly, in that what this is trying to fix is turnover or ideas? Which one is it?
This, right now, is fixing the amount of tenure that we have lost over the years, such that we don't have very many experienced commissioners. I would suggest to you that it's just the reverse that happened in 2007 when the term limits were put in place, meaning we had a number of folks that had been on there, and there was no major changes taking place, and they were probably all doing a very good job. And at that time, there was the idea that we want to bring in some new folks, and thus we put term limits in place.
And I can understand that in arts community, you especially have a group on a committee that would all be, say, geared toward one type of art, and therefore, and especially if the body is particularly small, then, you know, you would get stuck into a certain rut as far as to what you would think about art. I'm concerned that we would be running through a cycle then, so all of a sudden, we remove the term limits, do we go back to where it's the same situation, and in another five years, we end up with saying, wow, you know, the Arts Commission is kind of stuck in a rut. What do we do? And I know we have issues with the Arts Commission, and I actually think, instead of term limits, we should go ahead and have a staff liaison, whatever you want to call it, a docent, a curator position, that would solve a lot of the longevity position, not a voting position, but someone who could just be there as a resource, which might solve a lot of those historical problems that they're naturally coming into right now, because we have a lot of art here, and it's good, and I want to see that it's good and that we keep it up. I think that's really what we're missing. I don't know how retaining people longer on a committee that I have issues with is going to help. I don't see that. Maybe someone else can help me out with that.
I can help you out with that. So we had discussed what it was that this commission wants to do and the way that they're going. This is also a 13-member commission. You do not have any other 13-member commissions when fully put in place. That would imply that there should be pretty good diversity. What we've run into is people that have not been able to stay with this commission at this time, and so we don't have a lot of experience for even running the meetings. This commission has worked without a coach or a second-in-command for months. Your idea and suggestion about funding a position, we'll have an opportunity to look at that based on budgets and things like that, but we've been working hard to partner with the Arts Alliance here in town, and we have a great representative from there on it. Ignite is on it. So I'm suggesting to you that based on a performance commissioner, that when you have a reappointment, they will be able to supply a, basically, maybe a scorecard and/or a letter grade on how they've been performing, which would tie into what you are suggesting this commission should be doing, because you get to oversee the financial plan for it and approve it. So I'm thinking that this adds to the strength of this commission, and such that you would have an opportunity to say, "The reappointment isn't working as well as we thought. We're not going to reappoint this person that's coming forward."
But you said the committee would be doing that.
No, you would get to do that. Every three years, the committee would be supplying you the scorecard of what they've been doing on a performance evaluation for your commissioners.
Since you've been with the city, has the city council ever rejected anyone appointed to any committee?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I don't think it happens very often, so no.
Okay.
Dan?
Well, my feeling on this is we shouldn't have a, one commission or committee that operates different than everybody else. So, you know, on that basis, I think we should be consistent. The other thing is that it sounds, sometimes you put these kind of artificial things in place that, gee, we're going to deal with it by limiting them to, you know, so much time, and then that's how we'll kind of deal with the people or whatever that we're not comfortable dealing with. I would rather that we just deal with it straight up. I mean, if we've got a people problem or a problem with somebody, we deal with it, and frankly, if the councils in the past haven't done it, well, too bad, but if it comes up now, we need to and we should. And I think it'd be better to just had it, deal with it straight up, so.
Any other questions for Troy? If no other questions, then we'd be looking for council action.
I'll make a motion to dispense with the rules and read Council Bill Number 18-1008 once by title only.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, for the students who are here, I know who you are. So what we're doing here is we're changing an ordinance, and it requires two actions. The first action is to dispense with the rule and read the bill by title, because the state, it's either the statutes or the constitution, requires us to read every bill three times before it's adopted. So by dispensing with the rule, our clerk only needs to read the title once.
Good job.
Thank you.
Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Only once.
Just once.
Just once, okay. Council Bill Number 18-1008, An Ordinance Amending Section 2.84.020, Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code, Removing the Limitations on Serving More Than Two Consecutive Terms, Providing for the Repeal of Conflicting Ordnances, Providing for Severability, Providing for the Publication of a Summary of the Ordinance, and Providing for an Effective Date thereof.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
I move to adopt Council Bill 18-1008.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I will be voting against this. This is the actual thing here. I'll be voting against this because I am a huge supporter of term limits. I believe in term limits, so I cannot vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. Thank you, Troy. We'll move on to other business. Resolution Number 18-029, Approval of an Easement and Parking Lot Agreement with EVH LLC for Property Located at 1336 Kathleen Avenue, the lot located east of Jenny Stokes Field. Troy, you got this one.
Thank you, Mayor. On the screen is the location of the subject property. Kathleen Avenue is the top of the screen. Ramsey Elementary would be across the street. Ramsey Road would be to the left of this photo, and this would be the subject property. It has been a credit union in the past and has been empty for a great number of months, and there's a new owner that is looking at acquiring this. So we have an agreement with this property that dovetailed with this Jenny Stokes Field is here and the Jenny Stokes parking lot, just to give you reference. This would be an easement for a gas line that runs through that subject property. So legal has been working on this along with the proposed owners. So back in 1996, the city entered into an agreement and a parking agreement with the Coeur d'Alene Teachers Credit Union, which then owned this property on Kathleen Avenue. That agreement stated that the city obtained a driveway easement, which gained us access out onto Kathleen Avenue. In exchange for that, we worked on a shared parking, as well as an easement in favor of the general public, to use the credit union's parking lot, because we understood that Jenny Stokes could, the field could fill up with those micro soccer programs. So the credit union obtained that easement. We have 10 spaces in the Jenny Stokes Field that they could use during the weekdays. This agreement is binding on any purchasers. Thus, the new action. So EVH LLC is seeking to buy this particular piece of property and operate a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week veterinary hospital. They've approached the city in order to obtain modifications to the agreement, because unlike the credit union, EVH will need to use the parking lot in the evenings and on weekends, at times when the public may also be using Jenny Stokes Field. After working with Planning, Parks, Administration, it was determined that reserving 11 spaces in the former credit union parking lot for the exclusive use of the EVH customers would not adversely impact the public's use of Jenny Stokes Field, and that onsite parking available for both Jenny Stokes and the EVH property complied with the zoning code. With this modification, EVH will be able to proceed with the purchase of the property. Without the modified agreement, the purchase is in question. So we've worked with this proposed purchaser. The micro soccer, at times, is a very busy place, and more than just these parking spaces fill up. So we're bringing forward to you a negotiated agreement that we believe meets both parties' desires. We could use more parking at any given time, but we don't have access to all of that at that point. That is the staff report.
Questions for Troy? Woody?
So Troy, what exactly happened? So the public can't park where the pet place is going to be? Is that basically the only difference? I'm trying to understand...
Basically, we would relax or get away from that easement that we had in their lot for after-hours and weekends.
So we, the public can't park in their lot now?
Correct.
And so how is that managed, since the public has always used it? They don't know, or they can put up signs or fences or something?
Put up signs and ask them to be good neighbors with a new owner in there, working 24/7.
Soccer moms.
Soccer moms.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
We'll do some education, since we know who will be playing at those fields, and make suggestions on where they can park. A number of them do go to the police department at those hours and park up front. It's a safer walk over to the field as well, and of course, there is Ramsey across the street, a very busy Kathleen Avenue. to find another place for micro soccer, because we don't have full parking. We do have some ideas, just to give you some solutions. In, I should use the mouse, in front of Fire Station Number Two, there's possibility for additional parking that would help complement that area. And it also works well, since that's a training facility for parking for other folks that might be using that.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what do they get out of this? I see that it says snow removal, but what are they getting?
They're basically getting their parking lot back.
How, how so?
Because the public won't be parking there.
Oh, okay. So, that's their, that's the quid pro quo?
That is.
They, they don't, they, they get the tenfold, or the spaces that we would have normally taken on the weekends?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we do our own curb cut and just have our own entrance there?
The administrator has asked that question of the city engineer. I think as you look at proximity, the idea was to limit the number of entrances and exits onto Kathleen. So, they went forward and said, "We'll just do this one curb cut and let them in," because thinking of micro soccer and a credit union, those match up pretty well on not being there at the same time. But excellent point, Council Member Gookin. The city is now exploring what it might take to have better access out to Kathleen, especially since there's development proposed across from Fire Station Number Two on Ramsey Road that would add even more traffic, should it come forward. And so, we are exploring what would happen and how accessible would it be if we went out there?
When you were talking earlier, you, you mentioned something about the gas line easement. That's not part of this, is it?
It is not. It just happens to sit right here, so you can understand why we haven't done a lot of development in that area, because crossing that is a very major engineering task and lots of concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Troy? Ron?
Yeah, Troy, right now, people park in the school parking lot and cross the street there. Is there any way, and that's dangerous, because I've been out there with grandkids watching them play soccer and everything, but that's, that's dangerous. Now, is there some way that we could put up a parking sign or something that notified people that are traveling that street, that there is a parking lot there and people will be crossing the street? I mean, just like we have down on Sherman now, the yellow lights and all that?
Yeah, the, great point. That is definitely a concern, especially with the traffic volume up there. We could do a better job of asking people to go to Shriver.
People drive down, people drive down Kathleen like, like it's a racetrack.
We'll put the police on that opportunity, but I, I hear what you're saying exactly. That mid-block crossing is not ideal at all. And, of course, these are micro soccer players, so they're not very tall little people.
Yeah.
We can work on that, sir, and we'll give that some thought to see if we can improve the safety at that point.
Any other questions for Troy? If there aren't any other questions, we'd be looking for council action.
Move that we approve Resolution 18-029. An easement and parking lot agreement with EVH LLC for property located at 1410 Kathleen Avenue.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move to Council Bill Number 18-1009. Amendments to the Municipal Code, Section 10.24.030, clarifying how long a vehicle is prohibited from parking within 300 feet of a two-hour parking space, once it has first parked in that space, and the definition of parked continuously. Troy?
Good evening. Technology has brought forward this municipal code that has been on the books for decades. The piece of technology with all the cameras and all the ways in which it can read license plates is on the picture. We have had in the code that you must move 300 feet if you've parked in the downtown area known as the central business district, outlined in green on this slide. This goes back to the day when we definitely wanted to make sure that people were not rolling ahead one foot, two foot, 20 feet, 100 feet. And in so doing, 300 feet came out as the distance. That's approximately one block, but it's not exactly a block. And the blocks differ, as you can imagine. However, the smartness of this car knows exactly, once it's read your license plate, how far you have moved. And it, it would know based on, as the crow flies, because it's a GPS positioning. So, if you're not 300 feet away, this smart little car will notice that, and a ticket will be issued, because you haven't done that. So, hopefully, that sets up the stage upon which why we are bringing forward a rule that you already have and now are seeking to modify it, because we are enforcing it at a great pace. We have worked with the Downtown Association and the Parking Commission and a number of our business people and/or workers downtown, and believe we've brought together a solution that can be managed and still recognizes the fact that we don't want people doing the 300-foot shuffle all the time. So, what it is, is we're proposing an amendment that would suggest that if you come downtown and park in that central business district, you have up to two hours to be there. We do not know exactly when you pull in, so it could be two hours and 10 minutes. It's not guaranteeing that car being parked there gets a full two hours. It's when we notice and record that you've parked there. So, I bring that up for clarification, because you may have heard from a representative coming forward that they didn't use their full two hours, thus they can use it elsewhere. That does not exist in this code. It's basically, you have up to two hours in one car parking spot downtown. The amendment says that you can move 300 feet, and we now know exactly how far 300 feet is from where it is you parked, and you could park again. But the amendment that we're making says that if you come and you park downtown and you get your full two hours, if you go another three hours, for a total of five hours, you could come and park in that same exact spot. This is to design for the businessperson that comes down in the morning and does a little bit of work, and then leaves for multiple hours, and comes back and would like to park near their business or their newest favorite restaurant or whatever, would not be sighted. So, it's a restart after five hours in the downtown central business district.
Questions for Troy?
Troy, how is three hours decided versus one hour, two hours, four hours?
It was looked at based on the route and the amount of time it takes for the parking enforcement vehicle to do the route and come back. And simultaneously, if you are being downtown for that many hours, why don't you go get a parking pass and park in a parking lot, which is what we want people to do that are visiting downtown for extended periods of time? The business district has a knowledge that those car parks in front of the business are worth great sums of money if you're buying something. If you're a worker and/or a businessperson, that doesn't generate the revenue for those businesses.
Other questions for Troy? Dan?
Well, not a question, but just from being the liaison to the Parking Commission, you know, would just say that there was, you know, kind of a lot of wrestling with this, and there probably, this isn't, and there probably never will be a perfect solution, but it, it is, you know, has a strong consensus that, well, this makes sense as kind of the, the next iteration of what balances between, you know, just having no rules and too many rules and all of that. So, it does have their consensus, but nobody would say it's perfect, so.
And there were people that, let's say they came down and they went to a coffee shop, parked at nine o'clock, got, got tagged that they were there at nine o'clock, and then they left, wanted to come back to have lunch later on, one or two in the afternoon, and under our current code, it prohibited that from happening. They couldn't do that. So, this provides a little bit more flexibility. It's never going to be perfect, but gives those people a few more options to park downtown.
Thank you, and it was great discussion. And, Mr. Mayor, the movement to give the courtesy ticket really has helped all of these laws that we talked about, putting it on a sign. So, imagine the sign that now says that if you're downtown and you park, you get up to two hours, unless you're gone for an additional three hours, and at that point, that it can restart.
They don't even understand the sign that says stop.
So, we worked on that, and the courtesy ticket would help people understand that we're, they're welcome downtown, however you can't stay in the same spot and move ahead 10 feet.
Kiki?
Was there a discussion about, I can see where this is a stopgap, we'll probably hear about this again, discussion that surrounding this and repeat offenders after this is in, in place?
We have a repeat offender escalation of tickets.
So, it would apply the same to this?
It would.
Okay.
It would.
Any other questions? If no other questions, we'll be looking for council action on this.
Yeah, we all want to do that, right?
Yeah. Oh, it's worth a try.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we dispense with the rule.
Uh huh.
Paying attention, kids? That we dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 181009, once by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion on that? Renata, if you could read the title, please?
Council Bill 18-1009. An Ordinance Amending Section 10.24.030 of the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, to clarify limited-time parking requirements and the requirement for moving vehicles outside the limited-time parking zone, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for the publication of a summary, and providing for an effect.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Motion carried.
Move to adopt Council Bill 181009.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call again, please. Renata?
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Motion carried. We'll move on now to Resolution Number 18-030. Approval of a memorandum of understanding with Rivers Edge Apartments LLC, setting out overarching and general principles in contemplation of a future transaction and agreement involving the exchange and development of certain parcels of real property in the City of Coeur d'Alene. Mike, you're up.
Well, that's a mouthful, Mayor. I think the memorandum of, of understanding, or MOU, as we call it, as I think about it, is really an opportunity. And so, you know, I think, well, what is an opportunity? I got out the dictionary and took a look at it. The definition of an opportunity is a set of circumstances that makes it possible to do something. I thought, well, that's pretty cool. A set of circumstances that makes it possible to do something. So, we're here to look at this set of circumstances that will allow us to do something. And what's it going to allow us to do? One of the goals, and our friend Chet spoke about it, is achieving more waterfront access, more view for the public, more public area. This land exchange that we're, that the MOU is really a framework for accomplishing, would allow for public waterfront, another 1,500 feet of public waterfront adjacent to the Bad Axe or the Atlas Mill property that was purchased today by the city. One of the things that I think we, opportunities we want to minimize would be some of the things that we see down in the Mill River area now. This was taken from our railroad right-of-way, and houses were built, they're very nice houses, but the way they're done, you would not know that there is a river there, and you certainly, unless you're a member, you, you wouldn't have access to the park. So, what does this MOU propose? And it's a MOU with Lance Douglas, Rivers Edge Apartments, this is his company. And he has developed apartments in the Spokane area, well, in this whole inland northwest. What we've discussed over the years is possibly trading some of our property and to, to benefit both sides. And so, what we have here is a map that shows the current ownership of the property. The property in blue is what the city owns. The property in pink is what Mr. Douglas owns. So, what we've talked about is what if we traded some of this property? Andy tweaked our mouse here. I don't know if I like that.
Better television.
The trade, the trade would be for what we call the triangle piece that Mr. Douglas owns. It's approximately 3.8 acres. For a portion of the property that was formerly the railroad property that the city owns, it's about 3.7 acres. So, approximately the same size, and it would be a trade for those properties. As part of the MOU, here's how the properties would look after an exchange. In addition, Mr. Douglas has agreed that we would have a 40-foot easement along the river for a trail. And I apologize for not arranging, but there will be a connection here that will go on to the west to Mill River, but on our property that we own. But that's, that's what the intent is. That's kind of what the configuration of the property would be. So, his property doesn't have us in the middle of it, and our property doesn't have him in the middle of it. And it lends itself to better design, better, more efficient use of the property. So, I wanted to talk about, you know, there's certainly opportunity here, I think, opportunity and benefits for us. But one thing I think we have to keep in mind is that this is Mr. Douglas's property. It has been annexed into the city, and this plan has essentially been approved. So, this would be the plan. He has the right to go build this. And it's approximately 21 lots across the, the riverfront, which would end up like that. So, you, he could do that right now. What he's saying is, "I don't want to do that." And he's here tonight, and he's got a, a presentation, he'll show you kind of what he wants to do. Instead of doing that, we would end up with 40 feet along the river, and then there would be another landscape 40 feet that would be property of budding the apartments that he's planning on building. So, let me get back to, so that's, that's what could happen right now, and we wouldn't get the triangle, and we wouldn't get the waterfront. But we want to try and work this out. A little more history. This described or shows the property as it's owned now. If we don't do an exchange, if we don't enter into the MOU, Mr. Douglas would be entitled to build approximately 469 units on the properties that he owned. And again, if we didn't do the exchange, he could go to the Planning Commission and seek a rezoning of this property. And the rezoning could add, he could end up with a total of 505 up to 879 totaled units. So, that would require a zone change, you know. But, so actually, with the trade, we did the, we totaled everything up, and because we're getting a little more land and giving up this, the maximum units that could be built would be 870 units. So, he's losing the possibility of, of building approximately nine units. And to kind of go through the math here, I don't think we need to do that. But, so what does the MOU require of the city? It requires us to allow Mr. Douglas to bring his property in and process it through the Planning Commission. He's going to ask for a special use permit and increased density. He's going for R34 zoning. Let me go back to. So, this would be the parcel that he would be working with. And again, I think he'll show you a bit more of a plan. He's going to ask for that increased density. He's going to ask for the ability to go 75 feet high with the buildings. He's going to ask for the ability to go 75 feet high with the buildings. Now, that's a five-story building, and he'll explain, he can explain more detail what that is. Does underground parking. It would be planned so that the view corridors are maintained. It would be planned to include the trail. But I think the big thing, and I think we need to just be straight up about it, is that this MOU would ask us, ask the city, to support the idea of increased density on this property. You're not approving it tonight. Planning Commission is the one that will deal with all that. You're not approving that, you're not approving anything. You're approving a framework to go forward with the idea of increased density. And what do we get? We get the triangle piece that fits in our Atlas Mill property, and we get the opportunity to have another 1,500 feet of riverfront property today and forever, basically. So, but it is a, it is a, is a deal. There's two sides to the deal. Now, we've heard, and I think many of you were there, that the public, when looking at some of the property, or looking at the Atlas Mill property, I think is accepting of the idea of increased density in exchange for public amenities. In other words, we're okay with, you know, some increased density if we get something out of it. And I think this is a, this is the opportunity that we have here to get something out of this. So just to be clear, what we're looking at approving here, the MOU, is, is a framework to go forward and work towards a land exchange involving this property. If at any stage of the game, we decide it's not working out, we can say it's not working out, no deeds have been exchanged, no property's been exchanged. We can say we're out. Likewise, Mr. Douglas, as he goes through the planning process, if it doesn't work out for him, he can, he can say, look, it's not working out, no deeds have been exchanged, we still have the same property. But I think the set of circumstances that exists now, and you have all been involved in a lot of the workshops and planning and looking at the Atlas waterfront site, I think the time is now to look at this very seriously because we get that piece that will make our piece a whole, while at the same time, giving the adjoining landowner the opportunity to take his piece and, you know, use it in a rational way. So I will answer any questions you have. And then Mr. Douglas has brought a PowerPoint to kind of show the type of things, the type of apartments and construction that he does.
Amy?
Can you go back to this slide that you said showed the math of the density?
Math?
Your words.
So this is right now. So if, you know, this is R-12, C-17, R-34. So if we just said, all right, it's not going to work out, and he could, and again, we'd have to comply with our annexation agreement and the various provisions. He could build up to 469 units. And we could, you know, we have our railroad, we could build a trail through there. If you go forward, he, like any owner, could come to Planning Commission and request for a rezon on this property, still keeping his property. So if he rezoned this to R-17, and this to R-17, or actually, this would be the R-34. No, I'm sorry, it's 17. So it'd end up at 505. If he rezoned it to 34 units, R-34, it could go up to 879. And again, I'll let him speak for it, but the, the plan would be for it to be built in phases. It's only built according to demand. I said something that I thought was kind of funny, that people that build apartments don't build them and hope that somebody will come live there. They build them because there's a demand for people who, by people who want apartments. And that makes sense, I guess. Does that answer what you're?
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mike, you're asking us to tentatively commit to higher density here without any reports from wastewater, streets, engineering, water, fire, which would be very critical to a decision that we were making regarding more substantial details.
Yeah, and I think the way to characterize it is that you're, if all those things work out, you support the idea if that all works out. And that all comes through the planning process and through the, you know, project review process and all of that.
So if Streets comes back and they say another 800 cars on Seltice is too much for Seltice to handle, then it stops. Okay.
Woody?
So where else in the city is R-34? Just to give me some visual on what increased density is. Is there, is it something we've done before? Is it, I'm thinking it's sort of like.
Michael wants to phone a friend.
500 apartments look like you're sixing, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So there are a few projects around the city that have the higher density. I'm trying to think. So the one, obviously, he hasn't built it yet, but he's approved for it already right here. Downtown is actually higher than R-34, so it wouldn't be that. I know, I believe, the mayor, is your project going to be R-34?
It is R-34.
So that's approved for that out on Port Lane Lake Drive. I think some of the ones up by Winco, I believe, have those, have the R-34 density, so.
What about on Seltice already? Are some of those?
I would have to double check, but I believe that they do have the R-34.
So it's more complex type or tall?
It does. It allows for 63 feet for the height.
Okay.
So he's requesting higher, but you can do that through a planned unit development.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for, for Mike?
May help to see the PowerPoint, but.
I, I just had one question on how does this transfer when you're talking about the deed? So at any point we're talking about this doesn't work out, either party can go away. So we have to assume that Planning and Zoning approves everything, the whole plan is in place. Then what has been agreed to transfers when the deeds transfer?
Yes. So this, again, is the framework of a negotiation that we'll, we'll say, okay, go for it. And he'll take it through the process if there's things that don't work or that, you know, it doesn't work out. But this will move it forward with our basically commitment that if it does work out, we'll do the deal. And he's saying the same thing. If it works out, I'll do the deal, and we'll go forward with that.
And so then whatever Planning and Zoning in the PUD approves becomes part of that deed transfer?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, Mike, the, the actual, if everything goes through the actual land trade, is that a public hearing?
Well, we have, we're going to, if you approve the MOU, our next item on the agenda tonight is setting the public hearing for and expressing council's intent to do an exchange. So you're saying, given this framework, subject to this MOU, if that works out, we will do the exchange, or we will set a public hearing for June 5. And June 5, the public can come in and say, good idea, bad idea. And then you would, just like any exchange, say, okay, we approve it or we don't approve. If you approve it, we don't hand the deeds over that night. It's approved, subject to complying with the MOU and the requirements in that deal. So it's still kind of like our annexations. We annex, but it's subject to, you know, completing an annexation agreement. It doesn't really happen until that, so.
Woody?
Mike, is there any urban renewal involvement here? Is Mr. Douglas's property in a urban renewal district?
You know, that's a good question that I should know the answer to.
It, it isn't currently, if we move forward with the new district in the Atlas Mill site, then his property would encompass that new district if that all goes through. Is it now? Could potentially be down the road in a new urban renewal district.
And is that his choice or our choice?
That is, that is our choice of moving that forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Lance is not asking for that.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions? Dan?
Just a little confusion on the timing, if we, if that public hearing in June, early June. But when would the Planning Commission process take place? After that, then?
Yes, yes. So really, I guess the thinking was that we're presenting this to you tonight. We might as well go ahead and set the public hearing in proximity to tonight. And if that's all a thumbs up, then I think he's going to move forward quickly, or as quickly as possible through the planning and the plan review, project review type process. So maybe by next fall, which I think, again, the circumstances are beneficial because we're looking at planning, working with the community on the Atlas waterfront at the same time. So if we know we're going to be planning with the triangle piece, that's one scenario. If we're not, then that's another scenario.
Anything else for Mike? I guess we'll have Lance come up now and have some things for us.
All right, escape. You're there? I screwed it up for you, sorry.
Welcome, Lance.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to show you a little bit first about a typical project that we've done in the past. I've just picked out a couple, so I don't take a lot of time on it. Show you the amenities we've done, the quality of the construction, everything that we've built. I still own, manage, so it's a long-term hold. I'm not a flipper on the stuff. And after I show you a couple of projects in what standard, I'd like to kind of show you what my vision is for the property that we have on the river, and the amenity packages, and what I would like to see it come up as. So I've given you a packet, everybody, and we'll just kind of go through the PowerPoint if I can figure it out. So this first project is Prairie Hills Apartments, located in Spokane. It's on the north side. We built it in two phases. The first phase was started in 2000. Second phase was 2002. First phase was 204 units, then we followed it up with 180. This is a, just our front view of the rec building on it. It'll go through, it'll show you the courtyard areas that we have. Typically, we have pools in our projects. This particular one, we put the gardening plots in, which have been very popular. We've got a tot lot there on the left that you can kind of see a little bit of. There's, there's a better view of the tot lot and the gardening areas, the pool, pool building. And we've got just a quick flyby video. Now, the video's going to show, the layout is going to go to the rec building. It's going to show the common areas that we have. It's going to be similar to the green spaces that we're, that I'd like to see on the Rivers Edge property, on the view corridors that go down to the water, although this one's not on the water. So we'll see if we can get this going. So this is just coming down our entryway. That rec building in the foreground there is the same rec building we just saw the pictures of. Fountain in the front. Over the top of the rec building goes out to a courtyard where a lot of the apartments look out into. I like courtyards. I like to put the amenities in them. We've got the pool directly behind the rec building, the garden plots, the tot lot. Lot of green, lot of trees. That gravel bed, call that a dry creek bed. Usually try to heavily plant that so the apartments aren't looking back and forth at each other. This particular project was done in phases, like I'd mentioned. It has two different courtyards in it. This back courtyard we're going to fly to here in a minute is going to have the sport court in it, again, the dry stream bed, heavily treed, vegetated, give some break between the units, meandering sidewalks, paths. So that's, you're going to see on these three projects we look at, that's kind of a reoccurring theme on all of them. We've got the, the nice landscaping, well-maintained project on the courtyards. Now, on this one, is the area of that project, you'll see that this whole area here, that area was a bunch, that was our courtyard anyway, one of them. Trestle Creek was a project we did on the South Hill of Spokane in 2004. We did that in one phase, 336 units. Took us about 30 months, a lot of groundwater up there, a lot of rocks, so a little bit slower construction. Again, courtyards, all the apartments looking out on the, or apartments look out on the courtyards. You've got the tot lot, pool, pool building, similar to our last one. Quick flyby here, you'll see the courtyard, dry stream bed, the quality of the maintenance, quality of the installation. So this one took us 30 months to do, so we did it in one phase, but it wasn't just all in the market at once. It takes a while to get them finished. So you see the stream bed there on your left as we fly by. This one actually had three courtyards. We're going to go through two of them. So we've got the next courtyard here coming up, and it's going to have the tot lot in it, stream bed again down the middle, just like the other ones have. This would be similar to what we're looking, proposing for the Rivers Edge, except at the end of this courtyard would be the river. So all of these people would have the trail system or the path system that goes out, ties into the trail along the river, which then would go to Riverstone. So the, the last one, this is one we just finished up last year. We started it in 2008. It's 660 units. We premiered into the last phase in 2016 of 120 units. It won the Washington State Multi-Housing Family, or Multi-Housing Community of the Year for all of Washington in 2017. I'm pretty proud of that. This is a good example of a big project, but it took eight years to do. So it doesn't just, when you're talking these many units, you don't just come in and do them all at once. You do them as the market warrants it. So you put in a couple hundred, 240 in this example. We waited three years for that to absorb into the Cheney market. Cheney's a student town, obviously. We know that because of Eastern Washington University. It absorbed them, and three years later, we came back and did the next 132. As it fills up two years later, 68, then another year, 120. So just some exterior of the building from the courtyard. This one, I gave you some pictures of the interior rec building, just to kind of show you the quality of our projects on the inside. This is a movie theater room that we have. This is a common area, entryway into the project. Here in the background, in this area, this is a big study library that the kids utilize a lot. And the pool, we have barbecue pit right in front of the sport court, tot lot. We've got a quick flyby. This flyby was done before we were done with the last phase. So you'll see a little bit of construction in the background, but not too much. So Boulevard entryway, you see that we've got a median or island pretty much in all of our entryways coming in. Like maple trees, we have a lot of maples. You come in directly into the rec building. These parking fields are fairly large on this, larger than what the parking fields are that we're proposing for the Rivers Edge one. And we'll address that when I get to the site plan. See a little bit of new construction going on back in this area. These are all finished now. Again, common theme, pool, pool house, barbecue area, sport court, tot lot. These trees aren't quite as mature here because they're newer project. And there's our courtyard going down. So there's our word we got. So that brings us to the Rivers Edge property. So this is a conceptual site plan for what I would like to have on that property. It's about 870 units. Seltice is up here on the front. Obviously, the river's at the bottom of the picture, the blue. 40 feet is roughly from the edge of the blue back to these line of shrubs right in here is 40 foot. This is where we'd like to have the path located at. It'd be a meandering path. Each one of these courtyard areas, like similar to this one, these four buildings all have the path system that comes right out to the path on the water, which will tie into the city's path on the Atlas Mill site and down to Mill River. So this is another courtyard in here. These people all have access out to the pathway. No parking lot in the middle here, so it's green all the way out. Same with this one right here. At the, at the entryway of each one- At the, at the entryway of each one of these courtyards that we have, these green areas, we're focusing on the river right here. So, what we'd like to do is, along the pathway in front of the buildings, we're going to have some type of bank stabilization or retaining walls, what we'd like to have in there. And then, when you get down into the areas where the green, the, the courtyards come down in, what we'd like to do is have that area, this is a blow-up of that area, have steps that come down the wall, down to a beach area that's in here. This beach area would be about 20 feet wide, 100 or so feet long, 120 feet long. So, the residents from the apartments, or the people on the trail, could stop on their bikes or on their walk, have some tables out here, come down the stairs, access down into the water. So, that was pretty important, I think, for everybody, me included, on, for the multifamily project. It's not very fun to be able to look at the water, but not be able to get in the water. So, we want everybody to be able to get down in it. So, this is, this is, you know, this is our main courtyard up here. Come down, we're going to have fire pit, barbecue, eating area, pathway, tables along the wall, and then the beach down below. And then, this is a profile of what it looks like. Along in, in front of the buildings, it'd be more of the, this is the short wall here in the back, and we'd have 40 feet out to the bank stabilization or the retaining wall in the front. And the path is only 12 feet wide, I believe. So, we'd have 28 feet left over where we could have landscaping, picnic tables, meander the path back and forth, so people can stop at their leisure, look at the water, or ride One thing that's came up on a lot of our proposals is view corridors. So, wanted to see what we had from Seltice, which is located up here, again, down to the water. So, what we did is, we went down the, the Easterly Most courtyard, and we drew a line there, and we did a profile of what will that look like if you're standing up here on the sidewalk of Seltice? So, this is the sidewalk on Seltice that you have. The water is approximately 50 feet lower than what that sidewalk is. So, as you're up on standing, right up in here, I know this is small, but that would be a person's view right there. So, the yellow line is what their view would be. So, they'd be able to see all the way down to the water, they're not, they're going to see the top of the wall, they're going to see out to the water, obviously not the base of the wall because it's probably going to be a 10 or 12-foot wall. But we have several view corridors that we're maintaining throughout the project. So, this is an aerial of the area. This is our project here. We're going to have within our project five different view corridors that look out to the water. And then, along with that, we put in the view corridors that you currently have in the city. There's one in Mill River here. And the only other one that we can really see, taking out of the, you know, not including the Atlas Mill site, which I don't, you know, not developed, so it's all a view corridor there now, is the one where the trail comes in off of Seltice coming down. So, right now, there's only two view corridors in this whole area. So, we're incorporating five within our project. So, I think we have pretty good connectivity from Seltice for the pedestrians, the bicyclers, everybody else, down to the water. These are perspective drawings we did for another project we have in Liberty Lake. These are five-story buildings. They're a little bit different than what you typically see down there for everyone else's projects. They're not the breezeway buildings, which are typically 24 units and three stories tall. These have interior hallways in them, so you don't have the outside stairways. When you have interior hallways, you have elevators that go up. One thing that's going to be different on our buildings we're proposing for River's Edge is these ones, this is Apple Way in Liberty Lake. So, we had some commercial on it in the front. The first floor is going to be parking, is what it's going to be. So, it's going to be podium-style construction, which means you have concrete for the first level, parking partially underground, and then you've got five stories of construction up on top of that. So, these are five stories as they're drawn right now. What we're proposing is a little bit taller than these ones, but it's a high-grade, it's a high-end apartment is what it is, because you've got the interior hallways, the elevators, covered parking and the whole thing. The covered parking allows your parking fields not to be any bigger than what they are for a traditional three-story building, because you're utilizing what's underneath your building. So, you don't end up with shopping center parking lots. And that is the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Lance.
Question? You have questions for Lance? Woody has a question.
I'm ready to move. Why am I mowing my lawn? Why am I doing that stuff?
Happy to have you.
That's really pretty cool-looking stuff. Impact on Seltice, do you get a vibe on that? I mean, those people have to get out of there, right?
Yes. So, before we did the project, before you guys did your project on Seltice, we were in contact with your engineer. We gave him our traffic counts that we had for the multifamily if this was ever to go forward. And we also gave them the traffic counts for if we were to develop a C-17 zone. A C-17 is your commercial zone, which will have, which could and would generate way more traffic than 800 units of apartments would. 800 sounds like a big number, but when you put a Walmart in on that site or something that that site can accommodate, that, that intense use, we're nowhere near that type of number. So, we've already talked to the engineer, and that's already, not going to say it's done, but we've given them our numbers, so they could calculate that into theirs.
So, I have to ask, what's the market on something like that?
I think it's an untapped market. You don't really have any high-end apartments on the water, no one does in Spokane or Cootenay County. So, I think you're going to, it's going to be a high-end project, and I think it'll be very successful. I don't think there really is any competition for it.
Real interesting. I'm impressed, but that doesn't take a lot, you know, like.
Didn't have to say that. Mr. Mayor, Lance, you're ready to rock and roll on this, right? This is what's going to happen?
This is what I'd like to happen.
Okay. Excellent. And what's, what's the, the phasing in on it? I know you phased in your other projects, so what are you thinking for this one?
Typically, we like to phase whatever the unit breakout is on the buildings, but usually it's about 200 to 240 units per building.
Okay.
So, construction on that, this type of construction is probably going to take us 18 to 20 months, depending on when we start with the weather, how bad the winter is. We would let it get up to 90% occupied, and then we'd start the next one. So, we'd start the middle one where the rec building was at, that had the, the biggest courtyard coming down to the water. And then, from there, we would go towards Mill River and do that next one, so we're starting on our west line and we're coming across.
Okay. And so, the, the timing really depends on how fast it fills up?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Lance, start to finish eight years?
Well, we did the Cheney one in eight years for 660 units. I would hope, I think there's more demand than that here with this type of unit.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Kiki?
On this project, are you firmly committed and married to how that design of the waterfront piece looks? Or are, is your company still open to suggestions, depending on what happens with the property?
Always open to input, but that was, that's what I'd like to see.
Anything else for Lance? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
So, while I was looking, I got to share this with you, because I thought it was so cool, that there's an old proverb that says, "Once the rice is pudding, it's too late to reclaim the rice." I thought that was apt for our commitment to waterfront and to access. So, once the, once the rice is pudding, it's too late to reclaim the, the rice. And I think we, we know that once that's built out, it's built out forever, so this is an opportunity.
Any other questions for Mike on this? If there are any other questions, we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 18030 memorandum, approval of a memorandum of understanding with River's Edge Apartment, Inc.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. And then, we have the other motion to set the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to authorize a city intent to convey land, that is, 3.7 acres of city-owned land to River's Edge Apartments, LLC, in exchange for 3.8 acres of land owned by River's Edge Apartments, LLC, and to set a public hearing for June 5th, 2018.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Ah.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206A, subsection 1A, to consider a labor contract or offer or to formulate a counteroffer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Gookin?
Affirmative.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Oh, yeah.
We were in executive session.
But everyone wants the mayor to sign their little.